All right, it's one o'clock and I will call the special town board meeting of January twenty eighth to order. If you could please rise from pledged attendance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Jean, can you call the roll, please?
Town council member John Casey.
Yes.
Town council member Terry Benely. Town council member Alan Gura.
Present.
Town council member David Soder.
Present.
Supervisor Jared Simpson.
Present. And Jean, was the meeting properly advertised as well?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. We don't have any communications as we start out this meeting, since it's a special. We've not done this before. This is a goal-setting strategic planning opportunity for the town board to receive, to look at goals that we have for the upcoming year and in hope in our goal of complete transparency with the process rather than having short discussions at board meetings or at other times, we decided to have a special board meeting where you can see us talk and deliberate and discuss and come up with our goals, our driving goals for the 2023 year in a public setting with as many people. And it's for Saturday afternoon, a brisk, beautiful Saturday afternoon. It's a nice turnout and thank you all for coming today. We will have time for committee input, committees, time to share out a little bit. I do have, I didn't anticipate this many people. I did make copies of an outline of the presentation that we have. Kind of the format that we're going to go through. Our goal is to keep it concise and keep moving and keep it to about ninety minutes. That is the goal and we have a hard stop at three. We won't be making any, and we will continue with the decision-making process as far as voting to establish our goals and how we will do that. We will finish that up and have that vote on Monday at our next town board meeting. But with that, we do have a time for privilege of the floor. Is there anyone who would like to be heard at this time? Keep an eye out, see if you see Gary bumping too.
I was just texting him. He's trying to get the Zoom information. So Doug's working.
Okay, all right. And I did talk to him not too long ago and he was planning on being here, so. Okay, as we go through, no other, nobody for privilege of the floor this time. I don't see any hands. Okay. We will have other opportunities to share if you would like to share your thoughts as we go on and go through. As we go through this, the purpose of tonight's meeting, of this afternoon's meeting is to establish three to five goals for the town board. These are goals that will be attainable. These are goals that will be supported by the town board this year. Specific attainable objectives that we want to achieve. There's a brief outline of the meeting and as we go through, as we go through the goals, town board will be brainstorming ideas, we'll be discussing the committees, they will be giving input and then we have a little bit of time to wrap up at the end. But that is the plan to outline and structure for our work session, work session today. First thing that I want to do is review our priority goals and these priority goals come from the 2022 CIC goals. We had, there's a special meeting in twenty twenty two, in twenty twenty one to look at the goals, come up with five driving goals for the year. And these were the 2022 goals that we came up with. And they are coming up there and I did alternate colors so that we don't have the same, so it's a little bit easier to see. But as part of this, I just wanted to have a little board discussion. Number one, encourage continued agricultural use of viable farmland and discourage development. I'm sorry, Terry, it's Terry. Oh, thanks. Pause for them to connect. All right. All right, Terry, good to see you.
Hi, how you guys doing?
Good. We jumped in, we're just starting. You didn't miss, you didn't miss too much exciting other than the chocolate fountain and the petting zoo that we had.
Oh, okay.
You'll have to catch.
You have some limes there.
Yeah, you'll have to catch up with that later.
Okay.
So as we review the, review the goals from 2022, the first, encourage continued agricultural use of viable farmlands, directing developers to more appropriate locations in the town such as the three identified growth nodes. I wanted to have a brief discussion on this, thoughts on it, any thoughts to share, how you feel that we've done with this, that we accomplished this and open up the town board for any discussion on this goal, if there is any.
I'll go first.
After you.
Well, I think many of these goals are, the problem with a lot of these goals is that they encompass more than one.
Yeah.
And more than one goal. So are we just talking about the first one at this point?
Well, I will bring all of these. I'll bring them all up so we can focus on all of them.
So.
And those are all on the screen. They're all in your packet that you have.
With regard to the first one, I think, you know, our conservation team is doing a good job as well as the ag committee with encouraging continued agricultural use of the viable farmland. I think we've all been very carefully aware of where we're expanding sewer so that it doesn't threaten further development in farmland areas. I know the ECD is also carefully looking at where that development is happening and I do know that we, our town manager and others have worked to encourage developers towards our M W O's as well. So I think we're, we make progress on that every day, frankly, the first one.
Any other comments on number one?
I could, I could offer just general comment about, most of them, I guess, is that, you know, when these were put together in, what was it, November, December of 2021, you know, the big group kind of got together, we categorized them, we ranked them and these were the five that were the top five. So, but they are, to me, some of these are multi-year in terms of, you know, how you accomplish them. You'd be chipping away at various aspects of each one, but these were strategic in nature, not tactical in terms of, you know, accomplish within a year, two years, something like that. I'd just like to offer that, that hopefully we can arrive at some goals maybe for this year that are more achievable in terms, you know, in terms of time, that some of these will be going on forever, you know, protecting land. I mean, that's something that never really ends. So just wanted to throw that out there.
Terry, I would agree with that. You hit the nail right on the head with what our purpose is today. Really attainable and achievable is really what we want to come up with for the year, building off of some of these others. So taking these down and winnowing them down to a handful of achievable, hopefully within the next year. And some, and many will work towards those broader goals that are going to go on forever. John?
I would add to Cateline's comments by saying that the ordinance committee has been very diligent in creating town legislation that protects the agricultural uses and agricultural land as well as the natural resources that we have. We created the scenic view over Lake District. I almost think one and two can be combined as far as these goals because I think protecting the natural resources and the agricultural farmland and promoting growth in the areas that we have designated. And it seems to me to be almost a single goal and it could be combined. And I do some comments about the others, but we rep, I'll just stop there.
I agree with the, the first goal is a longer-term goal, but I think any short-term goals that you, that we come up with certainly have to keep that in mind. I think we have to wrap everything around that because I think many of the people out here and myself, we've, we've come to Canada because it's an agrarian-based community with lots of open space and lots of open fields. So I, I, I think we always have to keep that forefront with anything we do. And I think obviously the three developmental nodes are a good opportunity to, to, you know, embrace growth while keeping our rural character the way it is.
Any thoughts continuing on number two? You've already, John already kind of got us into that, so.
I, I disagree slightly on combining them, John, because I, I look at those as two different things. One is protecting farmland and putting development where it makes sense. And the other one is a little bit more geared towards parkland because of the support recreation on protected lands. That's more geared toward, in the way that I read that is open space and parkland where you can have recreation on those places as well. So for me, they feel like two different things.
To me, I mean, I, I could go either way. It doesn't matter. I mean, I think they're both important. I just think that the verbiage could be modified to include that all in one single goal as opposed to two lengthy individual goals, but I'm comfortable either way. I mean, I think they're both important and certainly we have supported that through many, many ways here at the town and continue to. So.
Well, I think these pretty much all still are kind of overreaching goals for all of us, but we need to find actionable items that I think we're looking for specific action items as opposed to just overreaching goals. I don't think any of these have expired or in any way are not currently true.
That's a comment I have relative to all of them is what does encourage?
Yeah.
You know, what does promote me? I understand permanently protect, create ordinances and legislation to accomplish that. So, you know, when we get to point three, my question is promote housing, how? And I, well, when we're ready to move on to three, I'll speak to that. I don't want to jump ahead.
Let's, um.
Do you want to keep talking about how we've achieved them at this point?
Well, as we discussed this, this is the first step and kind of now we're thinking about what these are. And then the next step will be to develop our own individual goals. Now we'll have these in mind and that will help us and guide and we've already, and we've already said, we've already done one of the things, saying that our individual goals need to be specific and attainable. So this is just the overarching. These are the themes and then each of us, as we go through and combine and make our own goals, will now have these fresh in our minds as we go through and have that next discussion. So it's just a preface, right? And this is just to get us thinking about, okay, where are some of the ways that we want to have our, our steps for the year, our actions for the year, what are we going to have accomplished during the year? So this is just the first step of that discussion.
Terry made a phone noise.
Terry, do you have a question or just?
Well, I was just clearing my throat, but I would throw in. The, the goal should be, I don't know how many of you have gone through the SMART goal-setting seminars, but the SMART goal, S M A R T, specific, measurable, attainable, reasonable and targeted. You know, the goal should, you know, have those factors, you know, assigned so that you, you're not chasing, you know, windmills or something, you know, that they have to be as specific as possible and have, have them capable of being measured. Did we achieve it or didn't we? You know, those, those kind of thoughts, so I'll leave it there.
Let's jump on, we're kind of short on that, this first block of time. Any other comments? Let's combine three and four because they both deal with warehousing will grow and types of housing. Any comments? I do, okay.
Particularly bullet three, it says promote housing and development. I'm not sure what development means in that context. However, I do think that we need to add the word business because I think we want to bring business to the community. And again, it's got to be in our identified growth areas. As far as bullet four, the word support is very general and I'm not sure what it means, but if it is financial support, I have a difficult time asking our taxpayers to support that. If we said administrative support, I'd be more comfortable with it.
It's kind of what we did last week.
Kind of like what we did last week, right? I mean, I'm, I'm good as long as it doesn't bust our taxpayers any town tax money. I understand the state and federal issue.
That's a difference.
As far, that's different issue, but as far as we go here, administrative support can come.
I could just say improved development of affordable housing options.
Well, we have a lot of options out there right now. I think there's four projects on the books that we're just waiting for those funds from the state to show up.
Well, and for me, the thing that often loses focus in that goal is the affordable transportation part. I feel like that is a more attainable thing that we can actually have an impact on than the housing, which we are obviously as a town not going to be purchasing land and building housing. However, we can be creating walkable areas, bikeable areas, encouraging bus, bus stops and bus routes. That's something we can actually accomplish.
I think that's a good comment. And I think transportation belongs in bullet five. And instead of investing in construction, I would say invest in infrastructure, which includes roads, sidewalks, bike lanes, transportation, storm, sanitary water. I mean, we need to invest in infrastructure. I think we're woefully behind relative to that. So I would just move that transportation down into the infrastructure.
Yeah, and I, and I would add too, I mean, even with the transportation, sometimes it's an easy fix. It's, you know, Horizons couldn't get their, they couldn't get to where they needed to go and it's a simple phone call to regional transit and they're like, okay, we'll add them to our on-call list and if there's enough traffic, we'll add them to our permanent list. So sometimes we want to make bigger, try to create bigger solutions than we need. Rather, you know, we use services there and we can call them and use that which we have in place. And I don't want to lose with, and I, this is my common refrain with, with our housing. We have, we have a void of homes that are going to draw families and draw, you know, working professionals into the area.
In our school district.
And are, we very much, so.
I mean, my, my brother is here from out of town looking at the area and the first thing he knows is gosh, there's no young people in big ones.
Yeah. So that is, and we can, by encouraging, by making it easier, by, you know, not, and again, not financially, but being, being very welcoming to those who want to come in for those homes, those single homes that are going to bring in that crew, those working families, kids who want to come here, put down roots and stay.
I think it's roads, sidewalks, bike lanes, all the above are part of amenities that we need to really provide to people. And that's part of affordable transportation. It's, it's pretty cheap to walk somewhere. It's pretty inexpensive to have a five-dollar bicycle and ride somewhere. So I, I, I think that that's certainly something that we need to look at and spend a little bit of time on.
Absolutely.
Regarding the fourth bullet there, the support to development, I always took that more to mean, you know, advocate for rather than, you know, financially support or, you know, lend our voices at town board to that kind of support that we do need to focus on this. We do need to advocate for something to be done.
Good answer, yes. Good point, Brad.
So question, these are our, are currently the goals from the comp plan.
Well, these are the goal, yep, decided by the comp plan at the, at the meeting that we had and we, these were approved by the board. As can the overarching goals. No, the point isn't to amend them. The point is to now take these, these are the goals that CIC came up with in the committee charter, in the group, put together by the CIC. Our next step is to come up with goals as a town board that we want to attain. And we'd already mentioned it, we've said it several times, you know, Terry, I think you looked ahead on the notes because I don't know if you look from that bottom right-hand corner, but there are those SMART goals right there. So it's like you're in my head. So the, that's what we want to focus on. We want to come up with as individually, what are some goals that we have that we would like to accomplish? And I put a few thoughts up there as we're thinking about this. So it's December of 2023. What do we want to look back on the year when we have this meeting again in December of 23 to set our goals for 24? What do we want to look back and have some, what's, what's the key thing that we want to have accomplished and done or made significant progress in? And this is individual. So we're going to, we're coming up with these goals, these goals that we're bringing individually. Think back on our, your entire term of service, you know, your service is coming to an end, your time on the town board is coming to an end. What is the legacy that you might want to leave? What is, what is the feeling that you want to leave? What are some things that you want to say, hey, we got things, these things done. What's something in the next year that could lead towards that? And the last thought to kind of guide us, we're thinking, what, what would people say moves you? What motivates you? What, what is, what drives you? So with this, and this is where it's going to be a little tricky because we have some technology that we're trying to bring in. So we have, town board members have, and Terry, you can email it. Yeah, I can, let me text you the link. Oh, sorry, I didn't see your texts. Oops. Sorry about that. Sorry, I never saw your text from twenty-five minutes ago. So individually now, we're going to think about goals that we have, three to five, that you'd like to come up with, things that you'd like to see accomplished. And the program that we will use, it's just a little pad, it's a little padlet, padlet is what it's called. So as each board member adds a goal, it will then show up on here on the board on a post-it note. So then we'll have them all in front of us and we'll have them all here. And then we will discuss them as a board and then we'll go back and try to narrow it down to what are the three, and we have to decide that too. If we want to come up with three, if we want to come up with five, I just pick those numbers randomly because they seem to make sense, but that's another discussion that we need to have. And then we would make a motion at Monday's meeting to approve these town board goals for the year.
Do you want us to type them in here or verbally say them or what are we doing?
So go ahead and put those in.
Type them in, okay.
Yep, any goals you might have, go ahead and put those in. Terry, I will send this to you. I'm hoping fingers crossed that it works.
Okay.
All right, give that a try. Do you know bigger people? Yes, okay. Technology is not always that great. Did it work?
Well, first I had to verify that I'm human, so.
Okay.
No, I didn't have to do that.
I can do that. Find the light poles and then find the number of cars in the picture. This is where it just gets a little bit awkward because we're going to be quiet for a while. So you can just take a nap. She's heard, now we're already done a little bit.
This town reminds me of all my staff meetings beginning of school year.
I wonder why. And as we're doing this, remember with that SMART goal, you know, again, some things that are attainable, things that are measurable, things that are specific. Yeah, they're all, that's how it, I think I'm the only one that's not anonymous.
Yes.
We can own them.
Do you want me to try and be anonymous myself? Uh, that's me.
Jared, you're going to be able to share all that, right?
Yeah, I can print all of these. Yeah, I can take, I can take a summary of all this.
No, I need the.
Oh, I had to put them in a different, put them in a different thing for each one. Mine is all in the same thing.
Yeah, I, I submit it. So I'll gather this.
Jared, how do I, I don't really know how, how do I get those now million things coming up? How do I adjust that? Because that's, I have not used this before. I put everything in one spot and obviously.
Oh, you want to put it in multiple spots?
Well, they have to be, in order to be affordable on, right? They have to be in
Separate, separate, correct.
Different areas. So how do I do that?
I can delete your other ones.
Now, Tom, do you have one? What is this thing? I've never heard of it. Oh, no, wait, it just still has read, but so.
Yeah, I can expand it. So yeah, so we can get that.
And I don't know how I put my, I have four. I don't know how to put them into four different screens. Do you want me to just rewrite it?
What's that?
Do you want me to just rewrite it?
That probably the easiest.
So how do I fill it?
Which one's yours?
I don't know. Now I can't read them all anymore. It's under anonymous, but.
So you're getting to map out prioritized like that?
I think it's the, no, I think it's the one that says solar, solar law and short-term regulations. I can't get into it though, but.
These are like this. Don't you just hit publish at the top right corner? Yeah, I can't delete them.
Okay, so what do I?
They should already be added on our phones.
What do I do?
Yeah, I can see. Terry's got his name. Terry's got his name on those.
Mine won't let me adjust it, so I don't know. I, I don't even know how I can delete it.
We can break them down.
Oh, wait, you just got to do it. So hang on. Obviously, yeah, I put them in a different. Now this is going to take me a minute because I got to go. Wish I had this before. I could have done it, had it ready to go. So how do I make a new one, Jared?
Get the plus on the bottom.
Oh, I had to add that, yeah.
And take a couple minutes.
Process is switching over to another item. Why would I work one? It works rapidly.
Why would I work one, it works rapidly.
Jared, I keep having trouble getting back into that original post, so I might just.
Yeah, I just set a new box.
Well, that's what I'm being at, but I think you're gonna have to delete that first one.
I don't even see your first one.
It starts with watershed and actions.
So now I hit publish in a little bit.
Make sure you do different goals.
For a different one for each goal, a different. Because they're hard, then they're all gonna come in one box.
I don't know, should I publish it so it happens?
Well, it's gonna publish it all.
It publishes them all at once, but.
That's what I'm fixing right now.
Then you gotta break it down. Hey, technology is wonderful.
So you mean you want to, hey, write each one of these individually, is that what you said?
You could probably, you could probably copy and paste, it's one new one each time, if it wouldn't work, you couldn't. It's like last year.
Technically challenged.
Just like last year, Casey, with the little ones.
So I wrote them all like this.
So you would just copy, so what, here's what I would do. So I would copy those, cut them, I mean, cut them out of there. Publish, and then just paste the others individually, yeah, so. So you wanna get all those out of there, then publish the one. Cut, then publish. Okay, actually, do a new one. And then you're gonna. And then you're gonna cut those, you gotta, look at that. Alright, when we have those last ones up, then we'll start to go over these. Uh, what we will be able to do. Is we'll review these. And then, see, I can, I can't, um. Then, then the ultimate goal is gonna be, we would be rating these five stars, one through five, and then we'll go from there. And then Jean and I will be able to share this out. And for you and for everybody who hasn't shared this. Give that to the paper, tell me.
Or, I mean, electronic.
Then, that was you. The what? Yeah, that, believe.
Headline is still fixing things, I wanna delete that one.
Thanks for your patience, everybody.
Did you delete that original one I had? I'll try and find it in there, but I'm not.
Keep going, because I don't know if mine got in.
Mine are bold for some reason.
Okay.
I don't even see the original one, mine are.
So what everybody should see on their screen. You should be able to see everybody's on here. Uh, and then we'll go through and discuss, and you should have everybody's.
I don't have everybody else.
You don't have everybody on there? Okay, then we'll just do them through, we'll vote on these. Some of these we'll go through, we'll do the old-fashioned way.
So that that's.
Can we get it over on that screen as well? No?
You can't just switch screens.
That'll be done. Does Terry see the screen or just his own screen? Terry, can you see your screen?
Well, I, I think I have all here on my phone, so.
I wish you could move them so we could see what we mentioned.
Yeah, I wish, I just didn't do that.
I can't see that screen though.
No? Okay. So how do I share second screen? So, share down at the bottom, there you go. How's that, Terry?
Yep.
Alright, so these are the goals that we came up with, uh, that we, this is just our brainstorming session, we can go through and we can discuss these. Uh, each board member can kind of explain their thoughts on these goals as we came through.
So then it's not very anonymous then, huh?
Well, it wouldn't have been anonymous anyway, we need to share those anyway, yeah. That was just a glitch in the program, forget it. Living and learning. Uh, road, roads repair and replace aging infrastructure, look for shoulder bike lane opportunities, complete streets. No increase to town taxes. Promote housing and business development growth within identified growth notes. Financially invest in the town infrastructure, including road sidewalks, bike lanes, utilities. Watershed protection with PDRs. Conservation easements, I'll go through these ones, we have it, and then we can discuss. Develop a town mission statement and a town brand. Prove, revisit the Cheshire master plan. Identifying complete or initiate water quality projects within the town. Solar law and short-term rental law finalized and put into effect. Sidewalks, create phasing and begin to install Middle Cheshire Road sidewalks, engineerouthouse and north road sidewalks. Develop a strategy to address infrastructure, virtual rental policy. Prepare roads, look for bike lane shoulder opportunities. Establish the uptown bid with mission, scope, et cetera. Prioritize improvements in Ononda. Additional lake access. Move forward on Brickhead Road. Tell town line road connection. Adopt strategy to upgrade and replace transfer station. Complete Ononda upgrades, map out future upgrades. Develop funding strategy to increase highway improvements and construction. Begin to map out and prioritize bike paths, bike, bike paths, so like, bike, bike paths. Advocate for affordable single-family housing, add projects in the queue. Watershed protection, I think that was, was that your double one? Okay.
That's the double, so you can do it with that one action.
Okay, I know, I can't, I'm not gonna mess with the lead again. And then complete sidewalks in high use areas, example, North Road, North Bloomfield Road. Okay, so as we, as we go through this. We should have some, we have some common themes that have come through with these goals. Any specific ones that people wanna focus on and, and discuss? Discuss the common themes that we have.
Well, it seems that, um, sidewalks, bike lanes are, were mentioned, I think, four or five times on, throughout the. Number of goals, like, I think those should be a priority.
Okay, any other thought, any discussion on those, disagreement on those?
Well, they perhaps should be a priority, but I think. You know, the, the big driver there is the, uh. Upgrading, replacement, repair of our, uh, roads, the, uh. In the, uh, adapted budget for this year. Doug could put together a, a chart, a graph showing the, uh. What we're investing in, uh, highway replacing roads, rebuilding roads, et cetera. We're spending less than we did five years ago, six years ago. We need to come out, I, one of mine was developing its financial strategy to. Address that issue that we have talked kind of loosely about using, uh. An allocated fund balance money to, uh, at the end of the year to add into the following years, uh. Highway, uh, uh, improvement, uh, uh, funds, I think we need to. Seriously look at doing something like that or some other strategy so that we have. The ability to jump ahead a little bit, we've kind of, because of COVID and other issues, we haven't. Really kept up with replacing, I know Jim, uh, has talked about this frequently and, uh. You know, we really need to do something to get ourselves. Not ahead of the curve here, but at least try to catch up to the curve. So throughout this, I think there were five or six different, uh, comments or, 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 uh, items added here that. You know, that specifically addressed that and adding in the, you know, bike lanes and paths and stuff, I mean, that, that all goes together.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Terry, I would just, I would, I would just not like to see us work on a road, do something with a road and not take the opportunity. To, if there was an opportunity to a bike lane, sidewalks are a little bit different, but there are a number of ti- uh, areas in the town that are, that are. The, the shoulder of the road is, is the, uh, you know, pretty widely used by people going to and from, so. I, I, if, if we don't do it, at least if we ha- if we prioritize and map something out, um, if we don't have the money. At that current time, it just seems though, if we're working on a road and we could do something, it, it would be the time to do it.
Oh, certainly, absolutely, I agree.
So I think. To the point of this meeting, strategically. It's apparent that we need improvements to our infrastructure. And that could be in the form of roads, bike lanes, sidewalks, whatever the case may be. We're not gonna be able to, here in this ninety minutes or two-hour discussion, prioritize who, what, where, when and why, or how. But I think that it's obvious that we need to continue to evolve strategic plan to address our infrastructure and. To me, that begs a committee to address this and to develop a strategy, a long-term strategy. On how we can successfully improve our infrastructure.
So would you recommend a, are you recommending a separate committee, are you recommending that this be a task for the Planning and Public Works Committee?
Yeah, I'm not saying that we need to have a special committee, I mean, Planning and. Public Works could address this, I think, as one of their priorities. Over the next few months to come back to the town board with a strategy to invest and improve. Our infrastructure.
I just think.
And I think that includes sidewalks, bike lanes, roads. Uh, storm sanitary, water, water is a big issue that's been coming up in a lot of conversations and, uh. So I just think that. Infrastructure in general, and we can prioritize it and that. A team should come back to the board with some recommendations.
So to summarize then, it feels like this is one that will probably end up on our list.
I, I would prefer that we separate roads from sidewalks and bike lanes.
So you're looking at. So we have two different issues then, we have issue one of, where are some places where we don't have sidewalks, but we need them? Where are places that we are planning on roadwork? That we could include some of these, like the bike lanes or things in that roadwork.
Cool, one's multimodal transportation and one is.
What is? What, what, where do we increase and restore the funding to identify these next areas, these next steps that we wanna go? So we're not doing it haphazardly, so we're not adding. Next, I mean, Jim has a list, he does an awesome job of this, of the roads that are up for work. Each, the, the next year, identify from that list, are there any improvements that we could make? Expanding bike lanes on those roads. Are there any bigger projects happening?
I, I would need to do roadwork independent of looking at that, that's an area that we would like to see, bike lane or whatever, and if, if it works out with highway, then we. It's, it's, it's easy enough to do.
And you know, at line two point, I understand that, um. You're advocating for sidewalks and you're strong advocate of sidewalks, and I, I agree, I think we need them also, I mean. And I think we need bike lanes and so on and so forth. And I think if we have. A team that is addressing this. You can go and Dave can go and participate in that team and make sure that. You're, you're advocating for the sidewalks, you're advocating for the bike lanes, and then if that comes back and it's not satisfactory, and we're not. Appropriating enough dollars or enough energy, well, I mean. That's, that's us as a board, we get to go and say, hey, that isn't enough money.
That's actually kind of what I'm saying right now, so I come to this place, having been on the Trails Committee. Having been on the side, the Complete Streets Committee, having been on the Parks Committee. And then I, for the last decade and a half, we have planned sidewalks in various areas, like there's a whole plan for Middle Cheshire Road. And the phasing for how we would put that in, we've been talking about North Road sidewalks, we've been talking about Ahous Road sidewalks for a decade. I think we've identified and know for the multimodal spots where our priorities are, we need to. Choose what, which of them we're going to pay for and when, and that's, that's the point that I'm at now, is I've talked this issue blue in the face for it, over a decade. I don't wanna create another, another committee that talks about it, I wanna take what we do and do it, that's what I want.
Jim, do you have, uh. Identified areas where bike lanes, sidewalks, and I know you have roads. But bike lanes and sidewalks in particular, um. Where we need them and maybe a priority.
It's through complete streets and areas of identifying. To, uh, where we like them.
Okay.
And in development, but as far as I say, just a road as Dave mentions, um. It's not always. Financially. Easy to do what Dave mentions all the time, to just make her a shoulder wider or put it aside, what this. I- in my mind, a couple of things run through, one, if we're looking for, let's say, just, I'll just use Middle Cheshire. If that's what the town thinks, then perhaps that becomes its own special district to fund. Those who live there to pay for it, instead of making a taxpayer to pay for a sidewalk, on Middle Cheshire. Okay, because those who live in the north of the town will probably never see the use of that sidewalk.
I, I would disagree with that.
I understand, I'm just speaking my mind, so let me finish this. And so from there, that's one way of doing it, the other way could also be is to. You may as well come up with a separate line item for a capital project that you put money away for each year to put these projects in. Because you cannot take the current funding for having repairs, use that money to put in sidewalks.
Which is why we have that capital project, yeah.
Yeah, and sidewalks are dramatically different than a bike, bike lanes, sidewalks are so expensive to engineer and do all that, so, but. If there's, if we have the opportunity and you, your crews are working on a road and it's, you know, nominally. More expensive, that, that to me is the opportunity, but we need to identify those areas that where it's important, I mean, it's not, where, I mean. High use areas and where.
Like, we, I don't wanna digress for a long time, it's, I know you guys are trying to do quite your stuff, but there are other. Phases to allow we make a road wider, you know, take town line roads as an example, we want from. Twenty-four feet to thirty-four feet. So now we have a thirty-four foot wide road that's straight, and know what that makes people do? So, you know, then we have to listen to the residents who are not happy that we made the road wide and fast, where. I would like to see some more of a multimodal path. Off the side of the road versus make the road.
Well, I think that's, and I think that's what we can kind, we can. Ash out here, if it's something that we wanna go forward with, it's just, that would be, uh. Not an, like you're saying, it's not gonna happen every time, but if there's a road and it's like, hey, there's an opportunity to add. A little bit to it. Then that's something in the back of our minds, and it's like, okay, here's where we could do that, and we could accomplish the goal of widening it. Widening it, adjusting it, not adding ten feet, adding a couple feet for multimodal or something. To be able to have that there, that makes sense.
I'll give you a good example this year, we're going to a road. That's gonna go from twenty-two to twenty-eight feet, so it'll give us roughly three feet of shoulder. So that, because I know that's a semi-popular path.
It is a very popular path, right?
So that's gonna provide. One, more room for operating and walking on or biking on it, two, provides, um. Less damage to the road from the wind in the winter times, we're not, uh. It's a little narrow with the wind tends to chew up the shoulder, so.
And, and that's a little different from a bike path standpoint, because that road is, is so rural and, and the traffic on it isn't as bad as when you go to North Bloomfield Road and. And they're going, you know, fifty-five or seventy-five miles an hour, and if you just had a little bit more space, then you, you'd save. Five and twenties, I'll go example, that, that shoulder's ten feet wide, and, I mean, you can ride a, any, anything, you're walking, do anything hurt. But I, I think just from this discussion, it should become obvious to everything, everyone. We're, we're all over the place, so we need to focus on what can happen, you know what I mean, from that standpoint? Like, like Jim has a whole different set of, of issues than we sit up here thinking, you know, he's. He's nuts and bolts, you make the road wider, and people go faster, probably none of us thought of that, you know, and, and so we have to be aware of that. That's why we need to communicate on stuff, and maybe we do need a committee to say, hey, this is where we want these multimodal paths. And, and, well, then we, we should, I'm, I'm not aware of it.
There's a sidewalk envisioning team working on that right now for sidewalk purposes.
Right, which are two different things, sidewalks are so expensive that, you know, I mean, that, that's a different, a different issue unfortunately, but, but I still think we need to.
I mean, something like Middle Cheshire Road, we not only talked about it in the Complete Streets Committee for a decade, but we also. Had an engineer come and create an entire plan for it, there's a plan, it's been approved, it's ready to go, it needs phasing and input from the town board on. When we can put that into work, so, and that's been sitting there for two years now, so.
Well, I think we really have three places to focus on that. With that sidewalk discussion, which is Middle Cheshire, Ahous and North Road. Those are the three big ones, those are the three that we hear all the time. Those are the three big ones, those are the three that we hear all the time, and to prioritize those and. We've, you know. We'll have to look at funding for highways, we look at that that sidewalk capital project, and maybe it's um. You know, fund.
To John's point, if if we're going to get specific on on every, this is where on point one. We'll be, we'll be here at seven o'clock tonight, so I think we all agree that this needs to be, this is one, this is a priority, what the, what the, you know, what the. You know, the the. The the stuff that we need to really think about specifically, what we can do it another time.
Working detail.
Right, yeah, right.
So we have sidewalks and we have roads. Roads and infrastructure kind of included in there, whether they're one or two, that's something that we have to, you know, we've got to take a look at, look through, let's um.
Look, what it, what it always comes down to is money.
Right, yes.
We have adopted a complete street strategy. Every time, in my experience, that we've looked at a road that needs to be rebuilt. That is considered, and it should be considered. Is this the? An area where we want to see a wider road or. You know, to accommodate bike paths, to accommodate, you know, walking or whatever, and that. Since we have adopted that strategy, we should follow that, and we do follow that. But what it always comes down to is cost, and what we've done is we just kicked the can down the road on many of these. Roads, pardon the pun, but um. We need to have a strategy of how we're going to fund this, because. In the end, if our roads are crumbling, falling apart, and we have sidewalks, well, that's great, but everybody isn't going to walk. And we have to look at the fundamental transportation and at by car through our town on our town roads. If we have the opportunity to. Grab a hold of some grant money to help in 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 various cases, we should absolutely do that, but. It always comes down to cost. And over the past few years, we've seen costs escalate dramatically, so. You know, which puts us further behind the eight ball, so I. You know, I I agree, we we need to consider all these things at the same time. Jim has a program that he uses that rates our our roadways. He knows very well which roads have to be rebuilt, but occasionally something pops up. Like uh, Lifles Road this past summer, it had to be, a big chunk of it had to be completely replaced. Due to of, you know, a failure that wasn't, let's say, predicted. So, you know, it, as I say, it comes down to cost all the time. And we can, we should consider the complete streets every single time and. You know, move forward, but develop some strategy for how we can add a few bucks into. Your annual uh um. Budget. That's it.
Okay. Um, sorry, next one on there, and I'm just going to kind of go through these, and if we have common themes, taxes.
Well, I'm a hundred percent behind that.
I think this is important. In this upcoming year, where we're doing the rebuild. Uh, I think that we need to make sure that. Well, I'm hoping we're all on board, that. That doesn't mean that we have an increase in our real estate taxes to our taxpayers. I mean, overall, I mean, a individual person, but uh, you know, if we're collecting, I don't know, what is it, about five million or five point three million dollars in real estate taxes? It's my goal, hopefully, and everyone else's goal, that we still only collect five or five point three million dollars.
Right, keep that flat.
So that the amount collected tax rate could fluctuate depending on where we are. Where that assessment comes back.
Yes.
Yep, I think that's something that we can all get behind on that. Okay, housing and business development. I was going to kind of go through this quickly for time as we did through. Invest in infrastructure, discuss watershed protection, PDRs, conservation easements. Create watershed protection. Mission statement and a brand.
Let me explain that a little bit, that's mine. I think this is important, I think it gives us all. Something to work towards, and whenever we're investing money and or time in something, if we have a mission statement. I think we can go back and look and say, does this fit within our mission or not? And if it is, yeah, if it doesn't, then maybe we ought to reconsider it, but I also think it helps with promoting business and promoting housing. And promoting people coming to Canadigma and sustaining our growth, so that we can go and. Uh, tell people what we're all about and a sentence or two. I don't mean to sound corny, but some places have, you know, place worth living or um. Something like that, where we have a town lot or a town brand, so that uh, we can sell ourselves to the outside world.
I moved here from Webster.
And I think we do, we have state, we do have statements on our website and things we send out about our great place to live, work and play. Maybe we just, we have something, maybe it's as simple as adopting.
Or or revisit mission statement.
I didn't know that.
Well, we do have a mission statement that is in our camp plan upfront, so. It's rather lengthy, and we may need to revisit it, but.
Where is it, Terry?
That's a plan.
And it's the master plan. In our website?
Yeah.
So if a person went to our website, can they see what our mission statement is just?
It's not very clear, the master, it's a hundred and, a hundred and twenty page.
It doesn't jump right out at you, that's true.
You have to click around and find it, so.
Yeah.
Good, uh, revisit the Cheshire Master Plan.
Well, can I just?
Uh, right now, we're just discussing, but. Since you did not speak in, we will get, you know what, Oxana, since we did not speak in privilege of the floor. I will give you your three minutes, so go ahead.
I thought this was going to be an interactive meeting with, you know, the residents and the town board. Having discussions on all these. Items. So. When are we going to be heard?
Well, what this, what this is, and it's a, so it's a workshop of the town board members. To come up with our strategic goals for the year. Uh, privilege of the floor, it's not, it's not an open discussion session. It's a planning session for us, open to the public to participate in and listen, and speaker raises questions during the privilege of the floor time. So it's not, it's not like the, the meeting a couple of years ago at Armand that. Where we had fifty people, uh, it's not like that.
Okay, so. We already have all these plans. A lot of plans that we have paid good money to consultants. And in every plan, there are goals. So I feel. In order for us to. Accomplish something, we need to look at these plans, like say, for instance, the uptown master plan. There are so many goals, and one of the items that the town board. Has approved is the bid. Now, if you go ahead and start the bid, then we will get money. Into the bid coffers, so we can start beautifying.
Well, we have organized, the bid is organized.
Pardon me?
The bid is organized.
Oh, it is organized?
It is organized and funded.
And Oxana, I I I hear what you're saying, you spent a lot of money on plans, every one of those plans has a million goals in them. But I think we need to revisit those plans, because some of these goals are wrapped up in that, but but we're, we're, we haven't achieved them. So, so what we need to do is look at those plans, look at those goals, prioritize those goals, because I feel like that's what we're doing, because I think. You could find everything we've mentioned in some plan somewhere, but it's. It has an inch of dust on it or something, I don't know, but we're not, we're not paying attention to it, but but we need to. And and I think once you prioritize them outside of the plan. And make it a goal of the town board, then then I think we'll take action on it.
Because not everybody frankly looks at the plans, because there's so many, there are hundreds of pages of documents, the average resident. And also, as, well, you know, being in, being in, as, having served as an elected official. We need to prioritize goals and also realize the things that are. What's important to us individually, collectively as a, as a board. And how we can take those goals and prioritize them based on goals that we have as a one and as a five person. And find those that match up with. All these other goals, and I agree with Dave, but that's what we're doing right now, and prioritize those. And make those our driving force for the next year. As a town board.
Okay, can I just have another, give you another example? Like, Adeline, you said, you know, for ten years, you've seen all these plans. Well, it's been longer for the Hamlet of Cheshire. Nothing has been done, nothing. Sidewalks, no, nothing. And the state doesn't have any money to do that. And Jim says he would like to move the water lines. Um, to the front instead of in the back of the houses. They need sidewalks, that community, everyone walks, everyone walks. To the company store, to Ace's or the liquor store. Well, something needs to be done there, and I mean, I'm like a crazy woman trying to. Every time we talk about. Plans, we say, okay, how about the Hamlet Master Plan? Let's get something done there.
But I think that rolls into what we're talking about, and and I go through Cheshire quite a bit myself, either biking or walking or whatever, and it's a disaster. But that to me would be a priority for sidewalks, I mean, it's it's flat out dangerous for people to walk in Cheshire.
But the thing is, you know, you always try to establish like, uh, you know, sidewalk.
Right away.
District, okay? People in Cheshire cannot afford it, they could not afford sewers, they cannot afford the sidewalks.
So I, I apologize for a second, so we can keep, keep, so we can keep moving on, but what I would. Just to to finish up and wrap that up, that's part of the discussion that we had not too long ago. Uh, today is looking at, we mentioned capital projects for these, which allow us to fund it. And which allow us to build the money and build in there, and it's extended projects that's going to last multiple years. And ways of funding other than increasing taxes for the whole town. Um, and allocating money into that as a cap sidewalk capital project, something like that. So there are ways to do that, and we can't get into all the other funding issues and kind of all the other. Uh, issues that go on, but we, we, we hear you and we, you know, that's. Kind of why we're doing this right now today. All right, any other discuss, any board questions or thoughts?
No.
Water quality projects within the town.
There are two of those, so.
I know, there are a couple, so. Uh, solar short term rental, I think this one is pretty.
Very close.
Pretty close to being completed, would you agree?
Solar, short term rental?
Both of them.
Both of them.
Solar, very close, short term rental, getting close.
I'm getting close, yeah. So I would say that these within the next. Short term.
I think they should be a priority, I mean, I mean, certainly goals for us.
Yeah, I think that the ordinance committee is working on a recommendation for short term rentals that will be able to give to the board. And then for near future. And solar. We all know this.
Okay, I think I can skip over the sidewalks one. Infrastructure, we've talked about short term rental.
That's the same one.
That's the same one.
So we're back to the watershed one, basically, so.
Uptown, uptown bid, so we, we have organized the bid, we have not officially met as the bid.
We want a meeting for that, for sure.
Yep.
That's why I put it on there, I think we need to uh. Get together finally and uh.
Have that meeting and allocate.
Yeah.
If we have a meeting, I I would also like, I had on my list of things that I wanted to do this year, I would really like us to get a station two tour as the town board. Um, that might be a good time, we could meet at Station Two, I don't know if the town's facilities are, we could meet there and also have a tour at the same time.
Adland improvements, there are a couple of those, I believe, additional lake access. And there is, there are other ways of lake access, so it's that, I've had several discussions of this in the past. A few months.
That's how, that's in a master plan as well.
You have lake access, physical access to the lake, or lake access, which is opportunities to do things along the lake. So I think there are really two different things here that we might want to discuss and address. Lake access versus, you know. Entertainment opportunities along the lake.
I don't see us getting a lot more opportunities for lake access in the town.
I don't see much physical access, no. Uh, Brickyard Road to Town Line Road connection, work to the infrastructure. Upgrade and replace the transfer station. Timeframe.
Yeah.
I think that was yours, Terry.
Yeah, we have Lance that sent in a seeker and. You know, some other information that become before the town board in that too distant future. I'm not necessarily advocating, you know, that we should pull the trigger and replace it right now, but I think we need to. Come up with a, that strategy that, how we'll do it, and then. Once it makes sense to the town to do it, then pull the trigger, the. We've all seen a plan, it appears to be a good plan, but when we actually do it. Part of that is probably contingent on what happens with the county and the landfill, uh, but to have everything in place so that we could. All we have to do is say yes, go, I would just like to see us get to that point.
And there won't be, yeah, yeah, it'd be nice to have that in line, because there won't be any. Permanent changes at the landfill until it closed, till twenty twenty-eight, when it shuts.
But I, I agree, but yeah. I agree with Terry, I think that's an important thing to have, be able to pull the trigger on that.
Running, and once we know that end is in sight. Then we can, so we're not caught up guard, so we are ready to go when the. End is there.
We have put away some money towards that end also, so it won't be a complete shock to the taxpayers.
So just asking Jim a quick question, is there any urgency or things that are not working now that we require more, a more urgent look at that?
The only that's, our biggest issue is the queuing of traffic on certain days where it becomes an issue. Where they back up to five and twenty, sometimes that happens, we get the rush.
So a queuing issue mostly?
Queuing issue mostly.
Okay.
It works, not great, but it works.
Right.
I, I, that's where we, you're going to have seeker to approve for this project, so that part will be done. And we have a little more work as far as. Outprogrammed, like, most ability will look like, sizeability, location, but that stuff that. We can work on hopefully throughout twenty-three. If the county could give me some sort of direction. For us to start considering what we're going to do.
But no immediate needs to change what we're, what's, it's, it's working.
It works, it.
Right, yeah.
It's okay.
I wouldn't, I, if I was a town boarder, I would not rush out to start spending money yet.
Okay, that's what I want to.
But do you think by the end of, say, the end of twenty twenty-three, we could have a plan developed? That could be initiated?
We could have, we have a plan now, we're just going to come down to. Cost of structures, so we have a budget to work around.
And part of that is how far we haul garbage, right, I mean, we were talking about that.
We have talked about that, that's an issue that, are we going to, are we going to stay later, or are we going to be hauling to Staley, or they're a haul against ourselves?
And that, that decides on what we finally, because we might need to have bigger trucks and cars, right?
Exactly, yes, okay.
But I think this should be a priority, I mean, we we don't want to get caught caught flat footed, I, my, my. Transfer.
The transfer station.
Well, this, this is a topic of the Planning and. Public Works.
Committee.
Committee, right?
Yeah.
It's, we're working on this, right?
Yep.
Progress.
It's not like it's, yeah, it's in progress.
Oh, yeah, you guys have done a ton of work.
Funding strategy.
Talk about that.
Map out, uh, bike paths, we mentioned that. Or we'll send single, single family housing projects in queue. Watershed protection through PDRs, easements, and then repair.
And that's where I'm separated, but. And that's where I'm separating, but.
Uh, sidewalks, again, North Purple Field Road. So those are the.
We haven't really talked about the watershed protection issue though, I'd like to talk about.
Okay.
It, well, it just, I mean, um. I think the town board is aware of various opportunities to protect the watershed in the town of Pendequa, um, and I think we need to, uh. Uh, look more seriously into similar advice from Kevin Oldany, um, and pursue those opportunities. I don't know how much more in depth I can get on that conversation.
Right.
In my, my opinion, that's always a priority, I mean, it should always be a priority of us as government to protect the watershed, so.
But, we can set a goal to. Try to complete X number of those. Or have X number of those ready to go, ready to be funded. And worked on throughout the year. So I think that is where we come up with something here at this, at this. This discussion is, is coming up with that. Alright, so to summarize, we have, um. Short-term rental and solar law.
I mean, is it necessary to keep that on there?
That was my question, because we're so close, I mean, it's only to the fact that you could get one checked off within, you know. It could be checked off in a month, I don't need to check things off, yeah, I, I, we need to prioritize what we're gonna do as a board, and I don't think that that should.
Well, you know what, those stuff gets lost sometimes, so that's, that's why I put it in there, because that one for me is very.
And Vanessa, we're not gonna let that.
We do not call out the audience.
Ananda upgrades. Plan, transfer ta, transfer station.
I mean, some, some of these cost money and some of these don't, and that's, that's why some are more easily achievable than others too, so.
But we have to begin a conversation on whether they cost money or not.
Uh, and then I'm gonna split up sidewalks.
Scott, I'll take my role if you want to, but.
And then roads. Okay. So, short-term rental and solar law, props it all. Uh, bid plan. Ananda Park upgrade plan.
That's in progress too, right?
Transfer station upgrades, no increase in taxes, sidewalk, multimodal transportation.
Watershed.
Uh, roads plan and watershed projects. So we have, um, so we could take a picture and put them up on a board. Now, I can do, I can do one better. Yeah, just real quick.
Please teach your things.
Okay, hold on a second.
Are we gonna talk about committees today too?
Yeah, so let's take a pause while I'm putting these up, what I did want was, um. We do have a couple of committee reps here, and I wanted to give them the opportunity. To share their accomplishments, goals, things that they would still like to accomplish and work on. So. Shoot, I opened yours, okay. So, start out, Karen, do you have anything? Any thoughts or anything that you would like to share regarding your. Uh, your committees?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, first of all. In watching what's happening here, I can see the need for CIC committee. Because I, I don't think. The five of you are going to be able to. Disseminate or manage all of the information that, that comes with all of these goals that you're talking about. Um, I'm on the conservation easement team. And, uh, we have moved along really well in, um. Defining it, defining where we're going to go and, and expanding it, uh, pretty much to open space protection, et cetera. But, um. It needs more definition around it, uh, especially the conservation easement part of it. Needs more definition around it, so there, there is more need to, um. Gather more information and it needs a plan to move forward and actually have a plan. For how a, how you can encourage a landlord to, um, apply for a conservation.
Would you, would you say a need to?
And I know personally, this is not an easy job.
Would you say a need to also identify? Areas?
Well, actually, that is right in process now, um, we were, we're looking at doing an overlay map with open spaces. Uh, already identified, go in that other room there, it's like ten maps, ten maps. Um, and we are looking to combine several of those maps, um. And this also goes in hand and hand with watershed. Protection.
Right.
Because there are waterways that, um. I know personally. I'm interested in the conservation easement. For, I'm in Teeth Creek, and, uh. Have been talking with Kevin Oldany about that, so I know that there are, are state funds available for that type of thing. But it would also benefit the town of Pendequa, so I, I can see the need to continue with that. Um, because I believe, I believe they. Within this year, they could finish a complete plan and have the material available on. Um, what, how exactly to identify the areas and. How, what type of applica, application process, uh, a landlord would have to go through to do that, so.
And that would line right up in with that, with that wood, with that last goal that we had.
Yes, so that, that's one.
Okay.
Yeah, then the, of course, I'm also on Parks and Recreation, and many of these things are already being discussed to plan for the upland, um. Uh, improvements, uh, we talked about that the other night in detail, Dave was there, who knows? Am I supposed to let nobody sneak into that meeting?
I could go to meetings, they, they like, Jared likes me.
Because you can wherever you want.
You gotta be okay, you gotta know.
So, a, a, and they're, they're, they're really. The, the, that committee is really a strong committee in advocating for parks and, uh, upgrades to parks. And what we can do to make our parks more enjoyable and, and use more, so I, I think you're good to go with, with that. And you really don't, I don't think. I think you need a broader goal to incur, uh, something like encourage, um, use of public space within the town. Uh, things like that, uh, for whatever, um, okay, and then there's affordable housing. Which I am aware that there is negativity and positivity about affordable housing. You should know that because this town saw enough. Value in looking at it, we now have the county interested in it. Don't cut ourselves short. That, that team and that affordable housing team is what brought affordable housing to the ear of the Board of Supervisors. And the town, the, uh, town administrator, the county administrator. Where it's going is kind of in limbo right now as, um. It's all a story, at the meeting, uh, heard, you know, that there's work that has to be done. Um, they're, they're still in the midst of gathering information. They will have a presentation in the early springtime and another presentation in sometime during the summer. And that doesn't even include a plan.
May I ask you a question?
Yeah.
About affordable housing, can't move.
I have to speak up.
Yeah. Where, with affordable housing, where do you see the value in having a town affordable housing team? And a county affordable housing team, instead of just at the county level?
It, I, my goal would be to have it at the county level.
Okay.
But they need the support of the individual towns.
Okay.
And each individual supervisor. So, I'm just gonna let you know what, what I heard the other night at a bar, I mentioned it to a person. About affordable housing.
Which bar? Which bar, Karen?
Well, one of the things that they discussed was doing a survey of people at, at East U-Mall, who has over three thousand employees. Substantial amount, and most of those employees do not live in Ontario County. And I mentioned that, you know. Dave says he moved here because it was an agrarian community and, uh, it's beautiful. And you're right, it is, it's a wonderful community. I moved here fifty year, fifty-two years ago because my husband worked here. And I wanted my kids to be able to have a short ride to school, I didn't want them getting on a bus in Rochester. Or Henry other, um, and my, my husband wanted to have a two-mile drive to work. I moved here because we worked in this community. And this is, to have someone say that. Well, we really don't want those people here anyway, they're in the service industry, quote, this very, very intelligent person, quote. Is wrong, in my opinion, that's my passion showing, that's wrong. Anyone who works in this community should have the ability to live in this community. And their children should have the ability to go to a good school, like the candidate was supposed to. So, um, I would encourage you to. See this committee through for at least another year. And, and, and the reason is that. The people on that committee, and they weren't all there when, when you were there, but every one of them has their own. Element that they support, and they, they go to support the whole county as a whole. They actually go to support the whole Finger Lakes, Finger Lakes area.
So if I can just sum up real quick.
We're a leader in this.
So you would. With the timeframe, and I know we're looking with the report that we're gonna be getting back in July. There won't be a plan developed, and it probably won't be until the end of the year. That something is implemented at the county level and established that there's a, that there's an ad hoc or permanent committee, whatever it might be, committee created. So. Is your feeling that going on for the year, so we continue for the year? With affordable housing, then we can hopefully, fingers crossed, that rolls into the county. And our players can roll right up to the county and then be players at county level in the county committee. And bring their expertise there.
That, that is exactly, well, and, and I said at the meeting, I, I envisioned a three-county. Um, uh, affordable housing effort, and, and they even agreed with me that it, uh. There's, there's, uh, more power in numbers, and, and you need. The numerical power if you're going to be competing for the state grant programs, which. All of these, uh, housing developments that we have going that have approval. All of them are competing for the same dollars, so, um, yes, that's, exactly.
Okay.
I will recommend that, but keep in mind that. A, uh, they're going to need another proposal, uh, to. Go ahead and do an actual plan, because their proposal right now is just to do the assessment.
Yeah, okay. Alright, thank you very much for sharing that.
So you make my life easier, you get, you cancel all these committees.
We haven't made it, no decisions made.
Well, I think, um, so Parks Committee is not under consideration.
Well, yeah, and I wanna go through to this, and I just, before we go through this real quick, uh, I want to. So, those are consensus goals right there, but when we talk about the committees. And I couldn't remember, we have three that are required, is there egg committee? One that, that, is that codified, because I could not remember for the life of me, and I.
Yeah.
You know, I thought it was. So, these are their commit, the red are required by town, by, um. So on the left-hand column, add the agricultural advisory committee over to the left-hand column. Um, these are the committees on the left that are required by town law. Or, uh, state law. Okay? Town law or state law, so for example, Parks and Rec. Uh, is, is created by state, by town law. We have a Parks, Parks and Rec committee. ECB is a town committee advisory board created by town, town law. Um, planning board has to be there because, or the, the town board could do it. Or we can delegate it to a planning board, we delegate it to a planning board. ZBA required by state law, so these are non-negotiable. Town board committees are committees chaired, uh, by town board members. And these are the committees that we're kind of looking at, this is, these are kind of the, the other committees that have done a great job. And that's part of the discussions too, to see what committees meet the goals that we have. Uh, what committees have filled their lifetime? What committees might need a pause, or what committees might need to be kind of restructured a little, with a little more of a focus again. Uh, because they've been around for, you know, because of, uh. Goals changing over time.
So, if I can say something about the conservation easement team, I personally don't wanna touch that, they just got started, I think they're doing extremely important work. Um, and that's one that I would definitely like to keep going at this point, so, which I think most people are in agreement with.
Right, yeah. Alright, so any other, Axon, I know you're on other committees, many of them, any thoughts that you would like to share? A report on some of the committees that you're on, projects you have.
Can you go back to the committees one?
Yeah, sorry about that. Um, projects that you have, uh, things in the works, things that you really wanna see. Wrapped up, finished up.
Okay, first of all, I think all those committees should remain. Because they are doing. A lot of work that the town board does not have time to do. Yet we report to the town board. And usually, um. At the beginning of the year, or when a new committee forms, you know, we propose our goals. And the town board either approves or rejects, so. All those committees have been just a boon to the town. And because so many people are on those committees. You know, it gets into the, the town conversation. You know, the residents know what is going on, and that really helps. Okay, um, so.
So, Axon, could I just interrupt you for a second, um, so, so if we looked at those, um, CIC, how, how many times did they meet this year?
They meet twice a, a month.
Twice a month, so twenty-four times.
Yeah.
So, special events?
We meet once a month. To set our goals for the year, and then when. We have to meet twice or three times a month, when there is an event coming up.
So how many times did you meet this year? I, I'm just trying to get a, a scope of it. So, CIC met twenty-four times, special events met.
I think, I think, um. The special events committee met more than that, because I, I can go through what we.
Sure, no, no, I, I'm just, just to get an idea, affordable housing, how many times?
Months over.
Well, we meet monthly, but you have to keep in mind that. The meeting isn't the only time spent on.
No, no, I, I, I'm not, I'm not saying that, I'm just trying to get a, a sense of, of that, right?
But there were two months where we didn't meet.
Right. History?
They meet, uh, monthly, dude. And have met twelve times this year.
Tree team?
Tree team is Edith or Dennis, or they have not met as frequently as they would like. Um, they've been meeting a little bit more frequently, uh, in the fall. And I, and this is just anecdotal, they had, uh. Undertaken a review of heritage trees and, um. Excuse me, uh, invasive species in our cemeteries, so I get the cemetery ready.
And gateway?
We were meeting twice a month, uh, uh, and then. Um, we would meet more often when we were closer to the design. That we wanted for the town.
I mean, that, that committee seems to be self-limiting, once, once those signs are.
Once, right, once we complete the work.
Yeah.
And so it's a ratio, you should not do that month.
Okay, and I can say that as the, um, chair of the, the history team. He's, I think the history team has value, it doesn't really matter what falls on it. And it also doesn't matter whether it's funded or not. Because I think everything that we've undertaken. Could be funded in other ways by other committees or, uh, through working with the management supervisor. There isn't anything huge there, okay, it's very valuable, but it's not one of your.
Right.
One thing you need to remember about the special events committee is you're not going to have Halloween at Ananda. You're not going to have a, a float in the, uh, big parade in town, um. Um, you're not going to have a special event for, uh, an opening like Motion Junction without that team. Because those people don't just attend a meeting, the behind the scenes, they put hours in.
I, I'm not trying to indict them or I'm, I'm just trying to get an idea.
No, I'm just, no, I'm just telling, I'm, I just want to stress the importance of some of these.
Right, right, right.
And Dave, you know, because you have helped us.
Right, no, I do know, right, right.
Right. All kinds of events. So Gateway signage, I, I was the chair of that. And we developed, uh, the number of gateways. I think there, they were eleven. And then we developed the design. And we had the signs built as, as you can see at town hall. So I think now, um, I think MRB is working with uh, some of the landowners where we have planned to put the signs. And that's all like legal work. So, you know, I told Doug, we cannot be involved in that.
So would you say once signs are up, the gateway signage team, I mean, here, it sounds like if MRB is, we, you, we've located locations, right?
We gave them locations.
Working on easements?
At least, uh, Chris, I'm prepared to stay in.
So we're, that's.
All I wait for now is I've talked to the sign people, it's to be a day above forty-five, so you can touch up eight.
So we just, all right, so we just need, so they're funded.
And we funded them, right? Yeah.
We have the location, paperwork's filed, easements are in, so that, those, the, the signs are just ready to hit the ground. We need holes in the warm weather. Which, yeah, maybe June, day above forty-five.
Are you comfortable with eliminating that committee then, or do you want?
I am comfortable. You know, we have, we have our priorities with the signs though. And you just need to follow that and put the signs in. And I think the most difficult area has been on three thirty-two.
So, but we're, so we're okay.
Yeah. So we're okay with just standing that.
So I just want to go.
Well, thank you for your hard work, Ag. Yeah, thank you for your hard work.
You guys have done a ton on all of that. I just want to go back. Uh, so the tree team and up here on the board, I do have the scope of each of these committees and this is something else that just might need to be looked at. Um, you know, clarify, uh, so not just this one in particular, but on, on any of these. So the tree team, still working, um, we're still going forward. Any other comments?
Are they funded currently?
Minimally.
Well, I, the ECB has given them some money for trees.
That's what I was saying, and I, I have offered through, before there was a cemetery committee too. So they, they received their funding from other committees.
Kimberly, are you on the tree team or just a friend of the tree team?
I think the ECB leans on their knowledge and support.
Definitely.
Okay. So, okay, so the ECB leans on their knowledge, the tree team's not, okay, yeah.
Is that something you could wrap together?
No, because ECB is more looking specifically at projects and.
It's more of an advisory.
It's an extra board and it's.
They, they had a long-term plan and, and I'm pretty sure you're probably aware of this, but I'll just say for everybody's, um, that's right. To identify all the heritage trees in the town. And they're still in the process of doing that. Some of those heritage trees are on private property and then it's when it kind of falls on the property owner to I identify that and alert them. But they're in the process of doing it on town lands and they've done it, they've done some.
And if you want to talk about a committee that's filled with people that are incredibly knowledgeable about what they're doing more than anyone else in this town, that's the tree team here.
I, I would say Dennis, uh, painfully busy for us to back in itself.
Is an important thing. Yeah. So we have, uh, we, you spoke to the local history team, believe. Um, and we spoke to the conservation easement team focusing on multiple land conversation, open space projects. And some of these we'd see a connection with our goals as well.
I don't want to touch that one anyway.
Affordable housing and transportation, we touched on. Created, right, created twenty-twenty. The ag advisory that should be stricken. Uh, special events. The only thought with special events is, I mean, because Parks and Rec, Parks and Rec real, really kind of runs the movie night and the music night, correct?
I don't know why they do that. That really is a special event.
Yeah.
I, so.
But it's also rec.
Yeah, but.
Well, I was on the Parks Committee when we started that, so, so, um, I, I just think we were trying to increase awareness to parks, so, uh, I don't, I mean, I think you could work, I mean, there could be s- some collaboration on that for sure. With special events and parks. I, I know from attending the last Parks meeting, the Parks Committee does not want to be a special events committee. That end of story, they want no part of that. Um, and I, and I agree with them on that. They're more, I view them as more advisory committee that says, hey, we need to do X, Y, Z to enhance or increase or whatever with the parks.
Because that is your charge.
Right, right.
But so, is, when, let, wait, let me intervene about the parks, uh, activities. With the, um, pavilion at Motion Junction and talk about having events at that park. It's conceivable that we would need a special events team.
And that's where this discussion came out of, that they wanted no part of special events. And it's mostly with Motion Junction, they don't want to be in charge of whatever might be going on over there, so.
So, you know, I, they're pretty good about just meeting when they need to and, uh, I think they offer support to the Parks Committee.
And maybe it's a change for this, it's a change in charge to be specific to the events, the events. I mean, like this year.
They've also offered support to the cemetery.
Yeah, I mean, like this year, if it's motion, you know, we've got Onanda, we have Fourth of July, we have the event, the Parks events, the, uh, music and the, and the movies.
Halloween.
Yeah, and maybe it's just specific to those and we know.
And we're going to someday have an event for the takeover of Onanda.
Correct. So keep it kind of focused and I think that lightens the load for the special events committee because you're not trying to do all, you're not trying to do everything. And it's just focused and it's like, okay, these are these, the handful of things that we're really working on for this year. Rather than look, trying to think, we've got to do everything. And, and we have all these events and things happening.
Okay, so can I speak about special events? Okay. So because I listened to the meeting, the organizational meeting. And from that, I wasn't sure what was going to happen with the committees. So I just sent an email out that we weren't going to meet and, um, present our goals to the town board until this meeting happened and what you decided. But in the past, we have done a lot, but in the past year, we partnered with the city recreational, recreation department. And we had perks of the parks, which identified all our parks, the town and city.
Sounds great.
And we had different events sponsored by different, um, organizations. And so that was fairly successful, except I think at Onanda Park, not too many people came because it was a little further out, productive travel. We did not have a flow for Fourth of July. Uh, but Jean, I think you organized people to, um, march in the parade.
We tried, but there wasn't any interest because it was last minute, but previous years.
Yeah.
Yes, I kept organizing that.
So because of the perks of the parks, there just wasn't time for us to do a flow for the parade. Um, and then we were waiting to see if the state le- legislature was going to decide on making sure that the lakeside of Onanda Park was going to become a town.
Town.
A town park. Uh, we haven't heard anything. I don't know, maybe this year there will be something that comes to us, so we will have some kind of an event for that. And I heard that some recreation, I think it was, wants to do an event with us. Is that what you heard?
I'm not on that committee anymore, so, 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 but I'm sure, I'm, right, I'm sure.
I did, I did. So this was from last year.
They were talking about some winter carnival event when I was on the committee, right? So we were, we were talking about that.
Yeah. It's a good thing they didn't have a winter carnival.
Right, and we had all kinds of plans and ideas for a winter carnival last year. Of course, we had no snow and we don't have any snow issue. And so our biggest event was Halloween at Onanda Park. We had over a thousand people attend. Issue has come up and I spoke to you at the event about signage, okay? But the biggest issue is parking. And I don't know what we can do about it.
That is an overall Onanda issue for sure.
But so, so, and it, what, what I thought this meeting was about from the events committee was that they're, they're, they're based on an annual, they're, that, we, we as the town board look at them annually. So I think that's what we need to hear from people, the things that have been, been done. I don't think anyone's intent was to disband people, but it's an, it's an annual appointment. And, and I, I think you make the point, special events is very important, you know, uh, CIC is very important, I, I.
I, I want to read that.
Tree committee and CIC if we could for a moment. Well, it's finished, that's the next one. But I would, so, I think also think would help as, as we look at the committees too, for Axana for special events. Cause it sounds like you're stretched thin trying to do a lot. You know, maybe with that focus, you know, if it's like, please focus on these, these things plus anything that might come up, that'll keep you more focused on that. And not as, as stretched thin and overwhelmed, which I know, I know in feedback I've gotten sometimes, other people in the special events committee, they feel stretched, they feel thin, they feel overwhelmed with things that are happening.
We need more members.
So.
Well, and another thing I would love to come out of this meeting is a more clear indication of what committees we have in the town and a more clear promotion out to the town that this is, these are the committees you have available. If anyone's interested in serving them, these, these committees have openings and opportunities and would welcome new members.
And we can take that come out of this.
And so usually at the beginning of the year, you know, we make a plan for the year and we present it to the town board, but since we haven't had a meeting yet, you know, we'll have to do it maybe in February.
I, I would also love for us to come up with a schedule where instead of just occasionally receiving reports or if there's something big going on.
Well, yeah, I think that's come out.
I would love there to be a schedule for, uh, quarterly or twice a year, the, a committee person to come in and make a small presentation on what they've been doing.
As historian, I'd like to be in, included or involved at some point and take it a pass at the, the schedule um, of special events for that committee since it's town history and culture.
Sure.
I hadn't done that before. But the cemetery committee, cemetery committee actually has two, and it's special events, uh, Dennis kind of offered kind of a lease of assistance, but we can undertake them ourselves. And I think, now I think Axana, you've got to volunteer. Oh, I'll, I'll be there for the meeting where I take a pass.
Axana, you've got another body there to help you out. I, we all heard it.
You have, you're good, you're right.
Careful what you say, yeah.
Okay, CIC, it looks like.
So we're, yeah, we're gonna have.
CIC.
So we've got about fifteen minutes left, so a quick report. Can you do like a, a quick report on CIC and then I know John had some questions and discussion?
I, I just like a clarification on what they are and what they do, who they are and what they, okay?
So go ahead, Axana.
So CIC was, um, I think it was organized by.
Two thousand fourteen.
When, um, Pam Hellman was supervising, yes. And so our basic charge was to look at the comprehensive plan and look at the goals. And actually each goal that we had in the plan, we actually reworded it so that it was more up to date. Because that plan was, uh, I think twenty-eleven.
Well, it was actually two thousand.
Twenty-eleven.
Oh, that, yes, twenty-eleven.
That's all, yeah, that's all up there.
Yeah, so, uh, we worked on that. And then we actually also worked on the new comprehensive plan. And you know, last year we looked at it and we had that meeting. And, um, we established the new goals for last year. But in the past, we accomplished a lot from the sewer master plan, from the water master plan. Um, what else? I don't know, but we accomplished so much because of the goals that were in the old master plan.
Can I ask Terry a question?
We're working, we're working, we are working on the new goals. And at this, this meeting that we're going to have, uh, I don't know when Shauna's going to decide. Uh, we are going to prioritize our goals for this coming year. And at every meeting, which is twice a month, we have representatives from some of the, uh, committees, other committees. And we, they give us an update on what they have been working on and how it relates to the comprehensive plan. So it's a very important meeting.
Can I ask Terry a question? I'm, Carrie, I don't know if you, why, why did the CIC do the sewer and water plan rather than the planning public works committee?
Got to reach way back here. I think the, um.
It didn't exist.
It didn't think it was in existence. I thought that there was a separate group formed, Public Works Committee at that time was kind of in its infancy and we were focused more on campus improvement, specifically the, um, highway garage.
Highway garage, got it.
Water, you know, so. That's about the only answer I can give you, Adeline.
Yeah, no, that's, and Doug had said you didn't exist.
So one of the things, in my opinion, I think the CIC has lost its original intent the last couple of years. And I think that there is a need for a sharpening focus of the CIC. Um, one of the things, the original request, and I made the original request to the town board for the creation of the CIC was because requested a representative from the planning board, representative from the zoning board, representative from the ECB, representative from the town board. We then added Parks and Rec, we then added ag committee, et cetera. Because what that gave us was, uh, an avenue of collaboration of our boards and committees for everybody to be able to communicate and share information. And that's what's gotten lost the last two or three years. And if there was a sharpening focus of that, to bring that back, to share the communication, to make sure that that information is going back and forth between all the boards and committees and not just a who's working on what type thing. I think that that would reinvigorate it to back those original. So are those, is the CIC still consists of those people that you just mentioned? No, it's gotten. So we need to revisit that, that, yeah, yeah, that's what I was.
Well, it does. I mean, I, I got out originally because of Parks Rec.
Right.
And they, they said, oh, so we need someone out of the CIC.
And ECB still hasn't been on that one.
And I didn't say anything and they said, gee, thanks, Carrie.
The goal, the focus has been, so committee members are Shauna, Doug, Axana, Ray, Kelly LaVoy, Karen, Sal, Sarah Reynolds, Tom Schwartz, and Pat Venetia.
So it's got some.
It's got, yeah, it's got some and it is. And I think because I know for the, I know for the last, one of the concerns that I've had is in the last year, I know that he's, I know the CIC meets and I know the CIC discusses T, group teams report to the CIC. But that doesn't always come back and filter back to us. So we don't know exactly what the teams are doing, it doesn't always come back. Um, and there's that muddying of the waters and it's, and that other layer that sometimes gets lost in translation. A barrier to coming back to us and what's going on.
And I can, we modify that just to have the committees report that to us.
Yeah, and that's what really happened, um. John, that that really happened, what, late in the year.
Mm hmm.
Uh and I think you, I think you kept asking for reports from different committee members, I didn't realize.
Yeah.
That that we should have, and now I do want every month, but um. I think that should be needed.
Yeah.
I I think you need the C I C to bring all these groups together. Um but I think you need to notify the C I C that each group also needs to do a simple word.
Oh, hold on, let's let Leif go ahead, Leif and John.
Is the co-chair of the history team, all under C I C, I have absolutely no problem with rolling that into my historian's report. Uh or letting Ray do that if he's free, uh because Ray is co-chairing with me. I don't see any value in passing our word up to C I C and then having C I C report what we can do or in very well ways.
But I don't even know what is.
John, hold on, John's not.
I agree, I I was just gonna say the same thing, uh and we've articulated it very well, I think that these teams, the committees that we create. Should report back to us, and it doesn't have to be a long lengthy report to say, like ordinance committee is an example, we're working on short term rentals. And we should have something for you in the next month or two.
Which is all we need. I think it, I think it's important that these committees report and and you know, so far we they haven't been, so I think we need to empower, when I was at the parks committee, I said to mark the chair. If you just came in every other month. And you know, make your report and leave, you people that make these reports don't have to sit for the two hours or however long we're there, get your report in and leave, you're not offending anybody, so.
Well, just saying, I mean, and they could even do it in a email or written handwritten note or.
Right, right, right.
The town board agenda and resolution comes out on Wednesday before a town board meeting, it's like this this last one. This was two hundred and eleven pages, okay? In there, it has the individual reports, and usually they're blank.
Right.
To me, that's an indication where that's where that report can go. Some people don't have anything to do in their life, so they show up at the meetings on a Monday night and can verbalize their report, the rest of the. The rest of the town, they have, they have lives.
Yeah.
And uh and they, that doesn't mean that they can't do the report.
So I think that's.
The thing the C I C does, it makes these people think about the things that needs to go into a report.
But I think it's incumbent on us as a board to push back at the committees and all those that, here's the three times you're going to report. And and I think if you're only coming three times a year, I I think in person is good because questions come up that it all that a written report can't.
And I don't think.
So that's on us to do that, so.
It doesn't need to be quarterly. And if each prod, each of the project teams reports twice a year, or depending on the numbers, three times a year.
Twice a year unless it's a major project like Onanda Uplands or something.
Or what's going on.
Report, then if they're not reporting. Then it makes us question, do we need it next year?
Right.
Do we need this group going forward next year if they're not reporting this year?
Exactly, and that that should be verbalized.
Yeah. Yeah, Axana.
Jared, um the C N C. Has detailed minutes. Do you not get them, does the town board not?
Um I was looking, I was trying to find those on the website, I hadn't seen minutes since, um, let me look right here. There are no minutes since September sixth. Of twenty twenty two, there's nothing on the website.
We have minutes from every meeting. So.
But that's when Shauna, you know.
And 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 Axana, I I think that's important to do, but I I think. You know, if you take all those things and we're gonna read, you know, forty five pages of each committee for, it would be, from my standpoint, it'd be more effective to prioritize. Here's what work on, and it can be five bullet points, you know what I mean, that's simple, that quick, and 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 it's, it wouldn't be, and and I think it's on us to get. Everyone into a report twice a year.
Because I want the committees coming back to us in a board meeting, in a recorded meeting, in an open session. In front of the public. Um where you know Karen will be there because apparently she said she doesn't have anything else to do on a Monday night, but in front of the people who are gonna be there. And that accountability is important, rather, you know, rather than a written report, I agree, or minutes, I agree that. So some verbalize, be here, explain what's going on, explain what you're doing, you might have questions, interaction.
And these opportunities for give and take. That's.
Jared.
Yeah, so. I I have, what's that, oh, Jerry. But he's right there, he's right there.
I I don't.
I have to say, um, thanks.
He's on twice.
Oh, another two Terries in there, yeah, you gotta get rid of one. Terry, which one is you? You're both.
Wait your.
Take down.
My i- my i- my iPad, my iPad, I I thought I was using my phone for a while.
Okay.
I think.
Now I charge dock.
There we go.
Great.
Get rid of one.
Yeah, you have two on, you're you're getting, we're getting some feedback.
The one that's right there, the lower one.
There we go.
That one, there you go.
Yeah, that should be okay.
Say something.
Terry.
Hey.
There you go, there you go, okay, you're good.
So in summary, I think what I've heard. Is that each one of these committees. Has a viable function and is serving a viable need. With the exception. Of the C I C. What I've, from what I've heard. Uh I've heard. Some question about whether, you know, they they did a very good job from what I'm hearing, when that, when it was first. Originated, and they've kind of. It sounds like they're a little challenged right now, where they're going or what they have to do, and I think that. We should charge them with coming back to us. To tell us what their goals are and what they intend to accomplish over the next year, uh gateway signs, it sounds like that. Once once we're done with the gateway signs.
They did a fantastic job.
Right, exactly, but I I think the charge for the C I C should be coming back to us with what their goals are and what they intend to accomplish. And uh the direction they're heading, because. You know, maybe their usefulness has already inspired, they they did a great job of what they did. Um maybe we need them going forward, but they they should come back and tell us.
Right.
In what way we need them.
So I would say with that, um. So do you want something in February, at the February town board meeting?
Well, I think if I heard Axana right, she said that they were gonna be meeting here in the near future and working on the goal.
Right.
Um so whatever they're comfortable with, I mean, and you know.
What are your thoughts on a time, what on a timeframe?
Well, we usually meet the first and third uh Tuesdays of the month. So.
Does that give you enough time if we?
Well, I don't know.
Shauna is the head of the C I C.
Shauna was online earlier.
Yeah, I don't see her there now.
She might want to see the sunshine there.
I'm here, hello.
Yes.
Definitely.
Good job.
I do staff the C I C. Um and we've been on hold. Kind of what. Axana said mirroring that until we get a little bit more direction.
So do you think February, the February town board meeting? Which is the. That's right, they are. It'll have to be March. Okay. So.
Of the C I C, was that, were the goals, is that what?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, who's gonna create a schedule for when committees are going to present the town board?
We have to look and see, we have to make a decision at our next board meeting, which committees.
Why don't you make that voice for us, sir? Put together just.
And then I can put it together, but we have to figure, we have to. We have to take the two off. Figure out where we're going, I don't think we need any more. Based on our discussion, and then present that by motion.
And we need to include those other already existing committees through whatever legislative vehicle in that schedule as well.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, and we can have that by, uh, we can discuss that during my business on. Monday, if I can get it done by then, and just make a motion on it. Latest, it would be February thirteenth, so. That would be a couple weeks from now. All right, so to wrap up, because we are, it's three o'clock.
Want to just target February thirteenth?
Yeah, then if it's, then you'll be surprised if it's Monday, you'll be excited if it's the thirtieth.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do that. Um so goals that we're gonna have to discuss, don't want to vote on them right now, we'll wrap up this discussion on Monday. And then we will have a motion to approve our goals for the year. We have to talk, discuss, and we, and this is, think about it over the next few days. We had the bid plan. On Onanda Park upgrades, transfer station upgrades, no increasing taxes. Sidewalk and multimodal transportation, roads plan and water supply projects. We really need to narrow those down more. Um but that's, those are what, that's what we have moving forward.
So.
Jared, could you? Could you send an email out with those to all of us?
Yeah, yeah.
Please.
Yeah, we'll do.
I think this was a very productive meeting and uh. I just want to say, Jerry, thanks for setting it up, I think it's been great. I have a question, and I just throw it out there in my idea. Do we need to get together for another meeting such as this, where we talk about those goals and and the merit of. Which one should be first versus second, or? The most goal in a board meeting, I don't know, it's kind of tough to do it.
Yeah, versus scheduling, what are your thoughts? Uh let me ask the most important person first, Jean. What are your thoughts on trying to do it during a board meeting or setting up a spec? Okay.
Okay.
We can hear, Jean, what you said.
Special meeting.
I think you need a special meeting, there's just too much discussion.
We had a meeting, a five P M meeting on Monday, we put a board meeting, so it's not.
Well, you can't do Monday because we've got the.
Well, that would be.
Oh, and that's part of it.
In the, I'm gonna say, well, it would be in the future before that, okay.
Yeah, five o'clock, if you take an hour, it's gonna be sufficient, then yes.
If it's not, then we need to.
Try an hour.
Yeah, start with it.
So let's start.
Should be doing an hour.
If you open to the public.
Oh, all these, yes.
All these are open, yeah.
Yep, and that's why, that was why it's a little different, because it's different than a big, a group of thirty. It's us kind of hashing out our goals and thoughts, which we can't do. We can't just do it on our own, because then we would be violating open meeting laws, we can't just do it with a few of us, because it's the same thing. So you kind of had to sit there listening to us brainstorm, hash out, deal with my technology, and figure all this stuff. You know, in an open, open session like that, so thanks for. Your patience with this, let's.
Before that meeting, can you, in your program, can you rewrite or summarize those goals and pick one that was? You know, basically combine them, because a lot of them could be combined, um so that we could more easily vote on those for your five star system.
And I just want to say, um, I want to commend all the committees, I mean, a lot of people, very vitalist community, and they've been working real hard and. It was very beneficial for me to sit here and to hear. People talk about what they've been working on and what they're doing, and uh it was very educational for me, thank you, I appreciate the feedback.
And we have a lot of great townspeople in these committees that are just giving their time and expertise for free to us. Which is one of the reasons why we have so many great plans and so much great advice coming in.
Absolutely.
Definitely don't want to watch.
Monday at five o'clock, we're meeting.
Monday the thirteenth.
Oh, Monday the thirteenth.
Oh, I thought we're doing the thirtieth.
I thought we were doing the thirtieth.
We, yeah, we have a, we have a presentation.
At five fifteen.
And we don't have time.
Advertise.
We don't have time to get.
We're meeting this coming Monday.
We have a meeting this coming Monday, but we don't have time to.
Don't understand that, yeah.
There's a meeting Monday. Uh where we have community soul, where we have a solar present, we not solar, we have community choice presentation. The energy one.
C C A.
The C C A on Monday. We don't have enough time to get it out and get the papers. Um you know, for our business days before then, so we'll do it on the thirteenth. And have our discussion, and going forward, to put on your calendars and for planning, these will, the goal will be, have these in the beginning of December. So we roll them out, Jan, beginning of January.
Give you a little feedback about that, Jared.
Yeah.
You're gonna have a new board, potentially. Hopefully not. Um so.
Maybe you want to make it in January rather.
But they can also sit in. On the discussions.
Yeah, they could.
And participate in the discussions and.
If as long as it's close to November, we'll know what it is.
Right, yeah, as long as it's after November. And I understand it's that gray area, it's doing it too soon versus waiting, and then you're a couple months in. But I I do, I do appreciate that. As well, everybody have their, so.
So Monday the thirteenth to five o'clock.
Monday the thirteenth, five o'clock, I will send out information on these and we will.
I may be zooming on Monday if I think.
Okay.
Due to my surgery.
Okay. All right. So, yeah, you might be too, so thank you, everyone, for your input, thank you for being here, thank you for seeing all this, and again, thanks, everyone.
Thank you for doing this.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I got that.
All in favor? Aye, aye, meeting adjourned.
Right.
Thank you, everybody, thanks, Terry.
Thank you, everybody for coming.